Ms. Martin, would you please lead us in prayer?
Most gracious heavenly Father and Mother, thank you for this beautiful day. And we thank you for your son Jesus down on the cross for us. And we just thank you for the message that you give us each day. And we just hope this meeting will go and be in your honor. Be saintly as in thy name, amen.
I hope you will remain standing on the safe pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, if you have a cellphone, I would ask that you mute or turn them off for the duration of the meeting. We would greatly appreciate it. Mute. All right, go ahead and call this meeting to order. Would you go ahead and call the roll for us, Lucy?
Yes. Martin?
Here.
Eugene?
Here.
Mayor Self?
Here.
Brenda?
Here.
John?
Here.
Mayor Self, you have a call.
All right, thank you very much. All right, let's go ahead and review the minutes from the previous meeting.
Mayor Self called to order the regular meeting of the council at 7:00 PM on April the 11th, 2022. The roll call was had, the following persons were present. Mayor Alder Self, Councilor Myrtle Benclink, Eugene Cowley, John King, Steve Brewer. Brenda Love was absent. The minutes from the February 14th regular meeting were read. Steve Brewer made the motion to accept them as read, seconded by John King. Motion carried. The minutes from March 14th regular meeting were read. Myrtle Benclink made the motion to accept them as read, seconded by Eugene Cowley. Motion carried. The financials for March were given. John King made the motion to accept them as given. Steve Brewer seconded, motion carried. Old Business, Mayor Self reported on the FEMA grant. The cultural survey done by University of Alabama is complete. We are waiting on the final reports. This may take 60 to 90 days. The de-annexation petition from Marshall and John David Calvert was read by Mayor Self. He then asked if there was a motion. No motion was given, the petition was not processed. New Business, the clerk explained the benefits of using Avenue Insights analytic, analytics, I cannot say it. And to handle our business license process. Eugene Cowley made the motion to contract with Avenue to collect and process the business license. John King seconded, motion carried. Mayor Self asked the council for permission to execute another MOU document with Jefferson County. Steve Brewer made the motion to execute this MOU. Eugene seconded, motion carried. Mayor Self also asked for permission to sign the proxy form to give the ALM delegate the authorization to vote at the annual convention on our behalf. Steve Brewer made the motion to sign this form. John King seconded, motion carried. Councilman Steve Brewer announced that he had moved from the town and was resigning as of this evening. Council seat place five is now vacant. Steve Brewer noted that we have a two-foot washout on the, two-foot hole washout on the side of Town Street. He said that it needed to be fixed as soon as possible. Marshall Calvert questioned the town as to why they didn't grant the de-annexation. Discussion was had. Malcolm Calvert talked about the road and ditch work needed on Copper Hill and Dean's Ferry Road. He asked if we could get with Commissioner Washford and him to look at these problems. The mayor noted that the clerk was sending an email to the commissioner concerning the road. The Newses Abatement Board finding Scott Mordecai reported on the Smith Mill Road conflict. He has met with legal authorities for advice. Next, the board will meet, vote, and inform the resident of the decision. A motion to adjourn was made by Myrtle Benclink and seconded by John King. Motion carried, being adjourned respectively submitted.
Any questions or comments or corrections? The minute is read. If not, do we have a motion to accept is read?
I make the motion to accept them as read.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion and a second to accept is read. All in favor? All right, motion carried. All right. Now to the financial reports. For the month of April. First up is the general fund account. Our beginning balance was $42,997.24. The ending balance is $42,738.78. Okay. Next up is the American Rescue Plan Fund. Beginning balance, $13,450.61. Ending balance, $13,451.16. Next is the Rebuild Alabama Diesel Tax. Beginning balance is $7,351.52. Ending balance is $7,726.26. I mean, 25 cents. It's $7,726.25. Next is Alabama, Rebuild Alabama Gas Tax. Beginning balance is $22,478.48. Ending balance is $23,443.14. Next is the four, five, and six road accounts. Beginning balance, $14,734.54. 53 cents. And ending balance is $15,001.06. All right, then we have the two and seven road account. Beginning balance, $5,384.86. Ending balance is $5,589.99. All right, next is our Capital Improvement Fund. Beginning and ending balance is $16,096.77. And I have a note here that we're going to be receiving our annual deposit of $3,831.78, which will appear on next month's.
It'll go over the back tomorrow.
Yep. All right. And the last one is Moving Black County Forward Account. Beginning balance is $33,046.05. Ending balance is $33,813.20. Any questions or comments on the financial reports? As given. All right, if there's no questions, comments, or corrections, we have motion to accept is read.
I make a motion. I'll second it.
And you had made a motion, seconded by Eugene, all in favor? All right, motion carried. All right. Under new business, we still have not been in contact or been in contact with Commissioner Washford. Malcolm, did you talk to him?
I called him twice and he sent his second mail and then I looked at it and we'll try to do something about it in a few days before we go have a driveway foot in. I hadn't heard back from him.
Okay.
Just to know.
All right.
I have got nothing, no email, no phone call.
Okay.
I can't even get the office to answer. Time usually answers, I have called the office several times to get their answer.
All right. I'll go down there. Okay. Under old business, we're still waiting to hear back about the FEMA grant. The cultural survey was submitted and, as I said during last month's meeting, it's 60 to 90 days probably before we hear anything back. Hopefully sooner than later, but it has to go through the bureaucratic review. All right. Under new business, during last month's meeting, we did address the memorandum of understanding with Jefferson County for emergency services. We authorized me to sign that MOU, which I did, but they also require that we submit a resolution approving memorandum of understanding. So I have a resolution. It's State of Alabama County of Jefferson, Resolution 2022-002. Now therefore be it resolved by the county line town council that the mayor be and hereby is authorized to execute a memorandum of understanding between the town of County Line, Alabama, and Jefferson County Commission, Alabama, for the purpose of allowing the town of County Line to participate in Region 6 County Contract for Degree Removal and Monitoring Services on this ninth day of May of 2022. Approved and adopted this ninth day of May, 2022. Any questions or comments on this resolution? All right, do we have a resolution to approve? Do we have a motion to approve the resolution?
I make a motion that we approve the resolution.
All right. Ready to make a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, all in favor? All right, motion carried. I will sign these and give them to you, Lucy.
Okay.
Okay. And...
They're still getting feedback somewhere. I think it may be John's microphone pointing straight up. If he turns it over towards you, I might say here, but I don't know. We're still getting...
Quit.
I don't know where it's coming from. All right, let me go on to the next one here. I have another resolution. And this is a resolution to adopt the Jefferson County Hazard Mitigation Plan. It's a resolution, State of Alabama County of Jefferson, Resolution 2022-003. The resolution of the town of County Line adopting the 2022 Jefferson County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Whereas the town of County Line recognizes the threat that natural hazards pose to the people and property within the town of County Line and whereas the town of County Line has participated in the development of the multi-jurisdictional hazard mitigation plan, hereby known as the 2022 Jefferson County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan in accordance with the Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000. And whereas the 2022 Jefferson County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan identifies mitigation goals and actions to reduce or eliminate long-term risk to people and property in the town of County Line from impacts of future hazards and disasters. Whereas adoption by the town of County Line demonstrates our commitment to hazard mitigation and to achieving the goals outlined in the 2022 Jefferson County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. Now therefore be it resolved the town of County Line, Alabama, that the 2022 Jefferson County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan is adopted by the town of County Line. Approved and adopted this ninth day of May, 2022. Questions or comments on the resolution? All right, do we have a motion to approve the resolution as read?
I make a motion.
All right, Eugene made a motion, second?
I'll second it.
John, a second, all in favor? All right, motion carried. Last item I have under new business. As of last meeting, of course, Steve had resigned his position as councilperson place five. And we need to start thinking about our nominations to fill the vacancy. So, does anybody have any recommendations or nominations to be made at this meeting? We won't vote on anything until the next meeting, but we need to start thinking seriously about replacements. Somebody to fill out, to serve the remainder of the term. Any recommendations today?
Scott?
Okay. Any others for today?
Malcolm said he would. Malcolm said he would be interested.
All right. Okay, well, again, we'll pick this up again at the next meeting and see if there's any other recommendations. Okay, any others? If not, we'll, again, we'll pick this up at the next meeting for the discussion and selection. All right.
Have we put Ethan, is Ethan? Heath, I'm sorry. We put him on the list, Heath. We put him down.
All right. Very good. All right, moving on to the next item. Do we have, Scott, do we have anything from the Newses Board to present yet?
Ms. Lucy said he moved.
I saw, I saw, Eugene and I did. Saw him loading up, a lady coming out of a mobile home and they were loading stuff in to a car and a trailer. Now, it looks like a different family is living there.
Okay.
We rode everybody we can have to go.
Okay.
All right, well, was there any other action from the committee pending?
Well, I talked to Judge Bonner about it in Black Alley. She said anything up till we pass that ordinance, we couldn't do anything about that because we didn't have an ordinance then. So it's from that time forward that we can do something. And I haven't seen anything. I go by there four or five times a day and I haven't seen anything burning since we started looking. So if he's gone, then we just have to see what the new family and just keep a check on him.
All right, very good.
It looks pretty well cleaned up. I was by there today and it looks a whole lot better.
Okay, very good. All right. Under, I did have, I've been in new business, I wanted to ask Heath about. Back a year or two years ago, when we asked Dallas Self fill to be our primary service provider. And we needed to get something changed with the Jefferson County EMA so that it would ring through.
It did not. I'll be honest with you, it didn't happen. Tried to get Sean on the phone and it didn't. And I've got a call, I was on my way down here and I've got a call into the Jefferson County 911 director.
Okay.
And as soon as I can find out what I need from him, I'll get a meeting set up with myself and Neil Brooks, which is the 911 director of Black County and find out what's going to have to happen because anything, I'll probably need, I could probably get it from 911 Jefferson County, the rest of the residences that get aside the town limits. So when Jefferson County rolls the call to Black County, that'll be set up in their CAD system so that I'll know it's a call, you know, specifically by Dallas Self on my track.
Okay.
It would still remain Jefferson County Sheriff's Department because I couldn't do anything about Black County's pesto coming. Well, the Jefferson County portion I can.
Right.
Black County, I mean, I have no problem with that, but I should hopefully know. Hoping something by the next meeting.
Okay.
I'll do my best because it fell by the wayside. It was something that he was supposed to handle and apparently he got busy and didn't. So just bear with me and I'll get, I'll just see what I can make happen.
All right, very good.
We'll make some progress by the next meeting for sure.
All right, I will make a note here. All right. All right, that's all I had on my agenda for tonight. Does the council have anything? Okay, question or comments?
See, but they left a bear at five central place. Last month, Dallas was playing against the Cavs, being out.
Yeah.
The state was remained, they just been out for two or three days. Well, we got pictures where they've been out since 2016, about every week. You know, so I just want to let you know that I went down here for playing, you know, two or three days, same, but they've been out. We got pictures, days and everything where they've been out, often on since 2016. They've been out all week so far, like weekdays out, different days they've been out, so.
Did you get a contact number from that gentleman?
I got a contact number. They told me I should be calling the sheriff, officer, somebody. If I had a problem, call him and his man fix the problem. His man come out there, tell me, lay up and passed the fence about eight foot and man left, the cows got out. So, but I just want to let you know that that wasn't a two or three day problem. That been going on since 2016.
Okay.
Same cows been in brother's place at one time for two weeks at a time. So, you know, we didn't know two or three day problem, it's been going on for years and years. And the widow woman lived lonely. Most of them know who it is. Lived in her yard all night last night and I told her. She called my daddy, won't know what to do about it. I said, you need to make a 911 report on it so we can have something to go on. And the cows is out here, calling Copper Hill, Dean's Ferry. You need to call 911, just send the deputy out to make a report. to make a report. On it. All it is to get your driver's license, your address and all that. You don't have to do that. You don't have to sign nothing. But you got to have a paper trail to be able to do and stuff.
Alright.
Thank y'all for the help. I'm gonna play Miss Kylie's paper. Help she give me all some names.
Yeah.
But the guy went down there and the state man come out. And it's like I told Lucy, but he said, I can write him a ticket for fifty dollars. That's the highest I can find from the being out. He said, I'll come back tomorrow and write another fifty dollars. He said, come back the next day, but I have no fifty dollars. He said, wouldn't do no good. So, that's why I.
Alright. Okay.
Somebody is going through one of these days, get one of those cows and get hurt, kill a food or maybe in some fashion and that's, that's, that's dangerous. Because they're, they're out.
All the time.
All the time, yeah. It's not, it's not just an occasional thing. It's every day.
Uh.
I think encourage people on Cabozil when they get out. Call and make a report on it. Sheriff Moon told me, he said, every time they get out. Call and make a report on it. He said, you make a report over the phone or just try to send a deputy down there. He said, two deputies, three deputies down there, three different times, make reports that I have called on.
We call nine one one to report it?
And, uh, if you call the sheriff's office directly, they'll put you right through the nine one one anyway, because that's why they had that right now. But Sheriff Moon did advise me to make a report on it every time they out. And you can go to the sheriff's department and get a copy of the report anytime you want to.
Alright.
Somebody gonna get hurt, so.
Yeah. Somebody is because I came home the other night and, uh, they were, they were all the way across the road. There was about five or six of them.
Okay. Alright, yeah. I appreciate, uh. Sheriff Moon responding to it. Okay. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am?
Uh, we're having a problem, a bad problem with speeders running through our neighborhood. Is there not a speed limit sign that could be put up? It's fully gotten out of hand since the new house has been built.
Okay.
Terry had told me when he moved in the neighborhood that, uh, the speed limit sign was fifteen. Was up right there by his house, but over the years it's deteriorated. So I don't know what the speed limit is supposed to be put there.
If there's a sign by Terry's house?
It was. It's not now.
Yeah. What happened to it? Is that the one that got run over?
No, no.
Stop sign.
I'll tell you what. You have something else to put on our list for washroom?
Speed limit.
To get a speed limit sign. Okay.
And what should it? What should it be? How much?
Well, it should be fifteen sounds right to me. If that's what was there previously with fifteen, then that's what we want to put back up.
There was a stop sign at the end of the road too. As you pull out on County Line.
Yeah.
Lady come through there and turn out mailboxes and they never did put a stop sign back up. That's been years ago when Jerry, a brother of ours, took his mailbox out. Did he get Jerry's Myrtle?
They didn't get mine. They got Jerry's. They got the telephone boxes on my property.
And then went down, took a stop sign out.
Alright, well, that's two things, uh, speed limit and a stop sign.
A lot of your speeding is FedEx or UPS. That's the main one.
They also fly up and down Copsville Road. And there's no speed limit sign on that road at all.
It's their run for life. Wouldn't get.
A lot of people don't like the speed limit and speed bumps because they put them all over trucks when people drop them off. That's not legal.
Okay, alright, John, David, you?
Who counts? County lines like a speed. Yeah, that's why right back here.
Maybe.
Like they're racing. Sometimes we're saying they're racing.
I will tell you that Black County sets up our sign. About five or six. And they're pulling cars over left and right.
And we need to ask them to come out early in the morning and late in the afternoon. Late in.
Yeah. In Black County. I was told by the sheriff himself they didn't have to have the right tickets. That because they don't make no money on writing tickets in the towns or in the county. They call away. Found the case. He had it set up several years ago. Had to call the state trooper. If somebody needs to set up, if they stop sign, I pulled out that gift in the morning with a taken, going to the doctor, had that blade in the backseat. Here come, uh, a load of tires coming this way. He never checked up. Never checked up. I believe he missed and they got another. Never checked up. They know the problem too, buddy, about that, that stop sign. We got some trucks coming through here and I know I used to drive a truck. Young David has, Coors has, all of them. We take shortcuts, okay? But when you take shortcuts, you both have to buy by the speed limit signs and the stop signs. I'm gonna tell you what, man, I drove far, told me, said, if you get cars running the stop sign, you park the truck because you walk home because you ain't gonna drive it home because I'm gonna come get it. He knows who I'm talking about. These trucks coming through here gonna get, and they just trucks either. They was right there in Thunderbarn. From Kajon's place. It is no place. Now they even, I've set a stop sign. Here come two cars. One of them passed the other. Neither one of them stopped the stop sign. They don't have no respect. The traffic don't have no respect to you at all. I mean, if you really want to see something, put in Dean's Ferry Road. Yesterday, they, even they were two cars come up the road side by side. And when they come in that car, they say, please. That's all it go. Here they come.
Do we need to call state trooper? Ask him to patrol to this? Do we need to call a trooper and ask him to pass through to?
Is that a state road? Or that county road?
County road.
County road.
But state troopers have.
But state troopers do come down as well.
They worked that wreck when that girl pulled out and hit my truck.
Well, they Jefferson, uh, Black County and the state have worked, uh, ID checks at the four way. Uh. I know that they did that and I had to show them mine, I think, three times when I came through there.
I know when they had that brick down in front of my house, that guy hit that other car head on about three years ago. Knocked it right in up from a little car. The county come down there, so they were close. But they couldn't ride, they didn't ride it up. But when the state got there, they took it all over done to find what you call it. Thanks for working on that.
Traffic investigation. Alright, well. We request, uh.
Does Trapper not have the police officers that patrol?
Not over here.
They have four. I saw one out there patrolling today. I was down at Young's Station. And he was patrolling around there in a white SUV and police on the side.
Yeah. Uh, there is a section over on Dean's Ferry that is in the town of Truck.
Yeah.
And, uh, he does come over there occasionally for that section, that hundred foot section.
Today, the first time I even saw one down there.
Yeah. Now, I was talking to Traffic's Mayor earlier and she had mentioned that. That they do occasionally go down there.
But it's since that sixty foot right away comes across that, say, instance. But when he leave, traffic sent a notice. Right down here. Don't they still have the authority to write a ticket in County Line because they, they got a, because they have a minimum mile to down to the jurisdiction?
I don't know the legalities yet.
Two miles.
It's generally, uh, police jurisdiction is a mile and a half or two miles. Uh. I don't know how that works with communities that join borders.
Michael told me they can write a ticket. They can pull anybody over wherever they're at, as long as they're certified.
Right.
Eight posts. But if they got a warrant, they have to call. Like if he pulls somebody over in Black County over, he has to call Black County to come arrest them. But he can detain them, write them a ticket, whatever.
Yep. Alright.
You know, because he approached through there.
Right.
When they, when he's doing the highway safety.
Uh, that's, uh, again, I'm, I'm not up to speed on the legalities, uh, police jurisdiction. Alright.
When he leaves this side of County Line in Jefferson County to go back to Jefferson County, that's in Black County.
Right.
But because he's leaving Jefferson County, going through Black County into Jefferson County, they, he is approved in that area of Black County.
Good to know. I, I'll pull over if he gets behind me.
That's how he can do the highway safety.
Okay. Alright, uh, anything else? Counsel?
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
Alright, we have a motion to adjourn made by Myrtle. And seconded by John. All in favor? Alright, motion carried. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much for coming.